I'd like to call this meeting to order. The TSK Charter Township Zoning Board of Appeals, Tuesday, August 13th by 30:00 PM. I'd like to record the attendance that all members of the zoning board of appeals are present. All five of us. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Can I have a motion to approve the current agenda?
Some support.
Moved by a member McDonald and Aaron supported it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 25th meeting of the ZVA?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, motion moved and approved. A motion moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to now acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak on non-agenda items. And you are limited to five minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience would like to talk about a non-agenda item? Anybody online, Nick? Okay. Like to now move on to Article Six. Case number 243846, Craft Avenue Partners LLC, Scott Gearlings. Andrea?
So the applicant is requesting, actually, um, this was a bigger project that came to the planning commission. So I think because of that, Ralph, because you voted on that, you would refuse yourself from this vote as a member of the planning commission.
Yes.
Per our zoning ordinance. So this is a large industrial property. Part of a, what I would call a campus of property. So they were recently approved for a property to the north. I'm not going to go into too much detail because you guys have a thorough analysis in your packet. They were, they were approved to build a building to the north of this. They're now expanding and building another building. The way that they're handling this is the north and south building will work together with a, it's got a U-shaped drive that is all located on the subject property, which is 5824. And because this, this property has driveways that are closer than 300 feet. They require a variance from the zoning ordinance. So I went through the conditions for granting the variance. They are asking for the minimal variance. They've worked with the planning commission and the board because they are also applying for some tax abatements. They've worked with staff incredibly well to make sure that all of our concerns are handled and that, you know, they have multiple sites throughout the city and have, you know, listened to our concerns and responded very positively to any, you know, criticism or recommendations that we make. So given the minimal requirement for that distance between driveways, staff finds this is appropriate for this site and that, that, you know, all of the design of this site is going to be appropriate and consistent with the rest of the development in, on, within Craft Drive. So I'd recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions for Andrea from the members? Can we have a representative, Mr. Gearlings step forward? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jack with Nederfeld. Scott Gearlings couldn't be here tonight. He had a funeral to attend.
Oh, okay.
But I'm representing him tonight. So yeah, there's a existing building just to the north of our property that you granted a variance on. They have a U-shaped driveways as well. There's this closer than what we're proposing. Ours is 267.
Could you do me a favor and talk a little bit closer to the mic? Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. So yeah, the existing use to the north, which isn't a development that Mr. Gearlings developed, but that one was approved for less than the 300 feet. We're asking for 267 feet. Mr. Gearlings did purchase the existing home and parcel at 5844 Craft in order to try to get as much spacing as he could get. So he purchased that property and then we pushed that drive as far as we can. That house would be demoed and the driveway would come out close to where the existing driveway is.
Okay. Well, it's 260.
267 feet.
267 feet.
Yep.
And the minimal allowed is 210?
220.
220?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the members? Okay, thank you.
I'm moving to public hearing.
Support. Moved and supported to go into public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are now open for a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to come forward and talk about this? Please come on up. Give us your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Ed Holmes at 6539 Waybridge in the backyard of Ace Hardware.
Yeah, that's not what this is on.
What?
We are on the Craft Avenue issue right now.
I'm sorry, I'm a little ancient.
We'll get to Kingsland Hardware in just a minute.
I'm sorry to have bothered you. I can't hear very well.
That's okay. That's coming up shortly. Anybody else in the audience? Come on up. Give us your name and your address.
John Kuiper. Address is 7345 Driftwood Drive, actually Ada, here on behalf of Train. And folks that were supposed to be here got scheduled to be at other plants unfortunately with some issues. They had to attend to different parts of the country. So I just wanted to, on their behalf, they asked me to stop in. Township has been great to work with, working through the site plan. From their perspective, the drive is, is really a key component for safety of flow, just to try and keep the traffic moving in a circular fashion. So it limits disruption with the trucks and the car traffic. So, you know, it's, they've worked well with Scott Gearlings and Jack at Nederfeld and just appreciate your consideration for it.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online have any comments, Nick? Okay.
Move to close public hearing.
Support.
Moved and supported to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, any discussion among the board members? Yes, Aaron?
Just say staff did a nice job of capturing everything and giving a strong recommendation of what, what is there. So if there's no negative comments, I would make a motion. We approve the variance as provided.
Second. Okay, motion by Aaron. Supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Okay, now we'll move on to Article Seven, case number 243847. Ed with Steadfast Construction, Inc., talking about Kingsland Ace Hardware. We have an owner representative here. Scott, come on up.
Good evening. So we are just looking for a variance for, to rebuild our existing storage facility. It is currently non-conforming because it is too close to the property line. But with the state that the building is in, we just want to update code and kind of bring that to the new standard, but also match the rest of our new buildings to create a more uniform look and kind of update that building and get the repairs needed that that needs.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Scott?
Scott, I noticed that they'd, they'd ask if you could put it in a, in a conforming location.
Yes.
But you prefer to keep it where it is. What, what's, I was just curious.
Just because of the indoor storage space is limited and we have a lot of stuff that requires that indoor storage. So to keep it as, to lose that extra five feet would be quite a, yeah, it would, I think it's like three or four feet off the line. I think it's got to be seven feet. And so it would shrink that building up. And so we're just trying to maximize the use of the land and the storage space. And the property to the west is more of a culvert and kind of drainage ditch. So it's unusable as is currently. So just want to maximize the, the space of the land.
There was a comment too about some of the things that are stored outside might be able to be moved inside. Is that?
Yep. And that, that's kind of the goal with that too, is to try to get, clean that up a little bit as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Scott? Thank you.
Thank you.
I skipped Andrea. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll give you a quick overview. This is, this is a hard one because we've really loved working with the applicant, but we don't make decisions on our applicants. Madison has been the point person on this. She's taking some well-earned time off, but she's really done a good job of kind of analyzing this and looking at, can we meet all of the standards that are required for a variance? And this is a hard one to justify because we ask, is this self-created? There's a situation where when this, when this building was originally approved in the 1970s from the research that we can do, it appears that the side yard setback for this zone district was zero lot line. So the original building met the requirements of the ordinance at that time. But we understand with non-conforming buildings that we, you know, once we rebuild those buildings, you know, we expect them to come into conform it. So Madison had kind of laid out which of these standards were met and which were not. And then today I'd like to give a little bit of context, the pictures that I provided. A neighbor came in concerned about the condition of the, some, the erosion that was occurring behind the buildings from the, from the building built on the northeast side. I, I don't remember exactly the date when that was approved, but they, you can see from the picture, some of the tarp that's used to, you know, that was supposed to be kind of a temporary solution to prevent erosion is still on the site, you know, years later. And some of the trees that were removed, they were never replaced. So we know that when we don't landscape things, that we end up having these kinds of problems. When we have slopes without vegetation, we get erosion, we have water problems. And one of the reasons that we require those side yard setbacks is so that you can provide landscaping and some of the vegetation needed to, to maintain the, the existing terrain. So those are, you know, things that we see as a problem and not, you know, requiring that this site meet the setback requirement. And also, you know, this is a new build. We understand that the building, you know, was originally compliant or appears to be from the history that we've looked at, but they are now choosing to rebuild. They're taking the, you know, the two buildings to the east and then combining them with the, you know, combining the new building that they're proposing the variance for with the other buildings. And we've suggested that maybe they, they build, you know, gain back some of that square footage by building the building, you know, into the site and maybe take care of some of this outdoor storage that was never, you know, technically permitted in the first place. So I think that, you know, we provided some options and, and one of those was a variance, but we had a hard time as staff getting to the point where we could be really confident saying that this variance met all the standards.
Okay, any questions for Andrea?
Andrea, this is proposed to be a complete tear down, correct?
Yep, I think that the, the, some of the foundation was proposed to stay. I like, I let the applicant, I defer to the applicant on.
With that said, was there any discussion with the building department as far as a renovation versus classification of new?
I do not know that they had a conversation with the building department, but it was expressed to us that the material was, that it really needed to be fully rebuilt. And when we look at non-conforming structures, there's a certain threshold. And we did check the threshold. That's usually based on value of the project. And the threshold did not meet the standards to, to maintain their non-conformity. So this was the only land use option.
I guess I'm curious because I'm thinking that this new building is at best 20% of the value of the property.
So we won't, we didn't, we don't calculate the whole value of the property. We calculate the value of the non-conformity. I believe that the, the calculation is done. So we would do the value of that building as provided by assessing in comparison to, I believe, and I'm kind of going off the cuff here, but I believe it was $120,000 project.
That, yes, that is the, the rough estimate. They, we had originally discussed to do more of a remodel permit, but in order to do so, we had to utilize that west wall, which is the one that rides on the property line that is in question currently. And being a non-conforming wall and still metal with wood studs, it wouldn't, wouldn't currently meet code to do a remodel in that aspect. So that's why we were asking for the variance to make it all the block wall, to make it more up to code and last longer.
So you redo the foundations to?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, so in doing that, you guys are obviously then at that point not only disturbing the soils, but, but recapturing all the water runoff. Is there an existing issue with the current newer buildings back there that's not allowing you to capture the water on site?
There is not. So that, there is actually drains in the front that are all part of the new building and all the water that runs off flows to the, it would be the east side and down the hill, completely off the east side of the property. Not off the backside, which would be the same situation with the new building and tie them all into the same drain. So that all drains to the east.
So the current, current condition of the property as well as the proposed condition, don't have any water runoff onto the neighboring property?
There would be just slight runoff from the back of the roof, but as far as anything from the front will be contained and diverted to the east.
And the new roof design is either sloped towards the south or towards the north?
Yes. Yeah, it'll run north and south and then, yes.
Nothing's going towards the west?
Correct.
Okay.
And that will match again, the two existing buildings that are there currently.
Okay. Any other questions for Scott?
Move to going to public hearing.
Support.
Moved by Tom, supported by Valerie.
It's a public hearing, so you may go up and, and give your comments.
Just a second. We're waiting for a public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's now open for a public hearing. If you have something to add, come on up. Ed?
I'll get out of your hair as quick as I can.
Your name again?
Edward Holmes, 6569 Waybridge Drive in Greenleaf, right behind the hardware store.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
I don't think I ever met Andy, but I knew your father, maybe your grandfather. I started shopping at that Ace Hardware store in 1976. Forty-eight years I've been shopping there. I'm all for free enterprise and building and doing all that stuff. Okay, I'm just here for information because I got a letter from you guys, okay? I lived and bought condo right behind the hardware store 34 years ago. I don't know how old you are, Andy, but anyway. And sometime during that 34 years, you put an addition on the hardware store, which faces my driveway. And I wasn't very happy about it, but I couldn't do anything about it. And I didn't know there was a hearing or anything else. Thank God it's painted black and not white. Okay. I apologize for these VA hearing aids. I got them from the army. And I was on our side, believe it or not, but.
Good.
Can't tell today. Anyway, I don't see a map anywhere here of showing the position of what he plans on building and how it relates to where I live. I can look out my driveway now and see the back of the hardware store. It's pretty not bad in the, because of the foliage in the, in the summertime, but in the winter I can see it very clearly. And one of the questions I had was if it's going to be on that property between our association and the hardware store, I'd like to know how close it's going to be, how high it's going to be and where it's going to be. And I have seen no map or anything here. Maybe I'm just wasting my time. But my condo now is in the vicinity of, my home now is in the vicinity of $400,000. And I'm going to have to sell it one of these days. And I don't want people coming in there to buy it and look like they're in a commercial zone. That's why I say whatever happens, I hope you don't paint it white. Because it's sitting behind the trees pretty good now. Okay? So what I'm still trying to find out from everybody is where is it going to be? How big is it going to be? How close to our property is it going to be? How high is it going to be? Now, does anybody have any kind of a map or anything they could show me? If they do, I'll go home.
No, Mr. Holmes, the, the packet we have is put online. Maybe you didn't see it there.
I don't go online.
I know, I'm, I, I understand.
I go back to the tin can and the string, you know what I mean?
Now, it's online, but I think, and Scott and, and Andrew, you can tell me if I'm wrong. What is being proposed, Mr. Holmes, is you'd like to put the identical, a, a new building in the identical same place. Same size, newer building, newer materials, same size, same height, same as it is today. Is that correct, Scott? So it's, all the dimensions that you've asked about will be the same, just newer.
So it's not going to be to the north or south. It's going to be right where it is?
Correct. That's what he's requesting.
All right. Then that's fine. And the only objection I will have is when it's built, that they paint it black. Is that a problem, Sandy? I'll tell you where you can buy the paint. I've been going to your store before you were born and always did a good job and liked it. I'm just interested. I'm sorry. I'm surprised nobody else from the association's here.
I'm here.
Oh, hi. Okay. Well, yeah, anyway, that's my story and I'll get out of your hair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holmes.
But my vote is okay, as long as it's painted black.
Okay. Would anybody else like to step forward and comment? Come on up. Is your name and your address, please?
My name is Marsha Dillard. I live at 6593 Waybridge. I moved in as they tore down all the trees to build the other building. So I look at the backside of a building and there is substantial runoff back there. I don't know if he knows it. I just think that people should know that there is a lot of runoff back there. The whole backside of the building is like, it's caved out. So.
It's a pretty steep hill.
It's a very steep hill and they, you know, my concern and our neighbor's concern was they cut all the trees down and left them there. So we have all these dead trees. When we go out, we're looking at the back of a building and a bunch of dead trees. I just don't want that. I was asked to come and, you know, say that and they don't want that further down the street. They'd like to keep the trees. So that's where I'm at. I mean, they're building in the existing footprint. There's, you know, that's kind of the way it is. So. So just wanted, I want you to know that mostly that there is substantial runoff back there. So. Right, yeah, we have big gouges back there now, big, like.
We're looking at solutions to correct that so that not like does that not happen in the future.
Okay, that was, that was their concern. So that, you know, you don't, if you cut down trees, you know, you can remove them because otherwise we're looking at.
With the existing building, the land is to leave as much of the landscape as possible.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't affect me except further down, you know, where you guys did the other building, but that was.
We'll leave as much of the trees in there as possible. And that's not the goal is to clear.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your comments.
And just to clarify, Scott, you're saying we're, just to help the association, the, the redirection of the water, because now you're going to have the, the water run to the south. Will that somewhat ameliorate that problem? It's going to go the other way?
So what, what that was from is from the building that was built in 2018 or 19. It's where that one is off on the very east side.
Okay, oh, on the east side, okay. Not what we're talking about now? That's what I thought. That's what this is, well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, our side is a pretty steep hill.
Right, I know, yeah.
There's a lot of runoff there and, like I said, all of that trees. So I just need to represent the association that they maybe keep that in mind further down.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody online for a public hearing? Okay. Motion to close?
Move to close public hearing.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Comments?
Question, question for staff. Andrea, if, if this variance is granted and this being a new structure, obviously we have to look at the land use from a fresh lens, which requires soil erosion, water, water detention, retention on site to bring everything up to today's code. The issues that have been brought up would need to be rectified under this current permit if, if it is granted, correct?
Yes.
So the applicant does understand that not only is he potentially just building a building, he's also bringing everything up to compliance specifically regarding runoff.
That's correct.
So any of these items that have been brought up as an issue of water running offsite have to be taken care of in order to receive a certificate occupancy and occupy this potential new construction.
That's correct. So this, this, they would be, if, if you granted the variance or if you don't and they want to rebuild that building, we would still have an administrative site plan review process for this new building. And the applicant has been advised that because they are building, that they would be subject to site plan review, landscaping. I don't know that it was done in 2020. That hasn't been, well, maybe in 2020, but I haven't, we haven't seen a site plan that was approved for landscaping along with this, but we will most certainly require that, you know, a buffer, a landscaping buffer is required per our ordinance for this development.
Okay, any further questions?
No, just comments.
Yeah.
So when we look at this from the ordinance standpoint, I think staff made the exact correct decision based on the ordinance to deny the variance. However, that's why we have a zoning board of appeals. I think there are some exceptional and unique conditions. And I'd just like to talk about those because I always like to look at both sides. So first, I think we all know it's a fact. The building was in compliance when it was built. We have a lot of legal, non-conforming buildings in the township. That just happens because we, we change the ordinances after the fact. So the building was in compliance and a new building on the same site would not be injurious to any party. And I think that's very important to note. And there is no impact on the use of the adjacent property, which is to the west. And actually that property owner actually wrote a letter of support for the building. And I've been up there and, and if you go to the front of the, the building, well, I always call it the new building, the front where we all enter. If you stand between, between the hardware store and the vet clinic, you can put your arms up, touch both buildings. So I mean, it's, it's there today. And, and again, there's no impact on the use of the adjacent property. So I've considered a fourth issue is, you know, this is a business with the neighbor being another business because we're talking about the west side. I appreciate the comments that are really go back to the east side. And I'm sure that the Kingslands would, in the hardware store, would try doing it, could rectify that. This particular parcel or, or structure is actually on the west side. And that neighbor is a business and they, you know, again, they have no problem with it. So this is different than a situation where all the surrounding houses or all the surrounding properties are houses. I think if it's residential, clearly there'd be a little different consideration than a business next to a business. But I do recognize that Greenleaf is behind it. The fifth thing I thought about was the applicant has changed the slope of the roof on the new structure. The fifth thing I thought about was the applicant has changed the slope of the roof on the new structure to redirect stormwater to stay on their own property. And I think that's a, a really important point. And I think the point that Andrea or that Aaron made was very important that if it's a new structure, then it has to go through all the site planning and everything. And I think the applicant's aware of that. So it could be more stringent restrictions on, on a new building. Again, if we look at simply according to the ordinance, if repair and maintenance work was done on the business and if they just kind of just almost gutted it, but just did repair and maintenance, there would be no variance needed. They could do whatever they wanted. They could keep the roof line the same, which has the water runoff, not on their own property, which again, isn't a good thing. So it, it just kind of was a little bit of a dilemma on that one. But the good news is that if we grant the variance, it's all going to be new and they are going to change the roof structure and, and that's a good thing. So there's some good things to this. And lastly, the seventh thing I thought of is that some of the outdoor storage we have today, which most people don't see because unless you go back there to get a propane tank filled or pick up something. Nobody likes outdoor storage, I don't think. And, and a lot of the outdoor storage will be moved indoor, which is a good thing.
Yes.
So I, I go back to it again, as, as Andrew said, this is a tough one because the building was in compliance when built. They're only asking to keep it as it is. And they're going to make improvements that are only going to be better. And they've now listened to the neighbors to the, you know, from Greenleaf. And I think they, they recognize those issues as well. So again, just based on the ordinance, reading letters and understanding the ordinance, I think staff made the right decision. But I think there are other exceptional conditions that we can take into account that maybe would be a benefit to provide an approval of the variance. I don't know if there's any comments on that?
Completely agree.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Somebody want to make a motion?
Well, since I came up with these, I, I make a move. We approve the variance based on the things that we talked about that there are no change or, and that it was put in by the builder, that there are no changes that affect the ingress or egress of the property. That the roof slope of the new structure has changed from the south to the north, keeping the water on, on the Kingsland site and keeping the structure in line with the main store building, which would be a lot, an improvement as well and, and look a lot better.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have?
Support.
Supported by Aaron. I'm going to avoid voting on this since I covered it with the planning commission. So do we need a roll call vote on this, Andrea?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Is there any business, any new business that needs to be discussed?
No.
September, what do you think we've got?
I actually don't know that we have anything right now. I think there's been a couple of things that have been floated, but nothing. No, we probably won't have a meeting.
Okay.
September.
Okay.
You guys can enjoy your fall.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, what time is it?
Six oh three.
Six oh four, okay.